Good morning and welcome to the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting. It's good to see everyone again. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance invocation given by Chaplain Commissioner White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask everyone to salute the flag on your screen or here behind me and join me in reciting the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic that stands in the nation's God.
And the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a prayer, the invocation. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide the board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions this morning. Lord, I continue to pray for peace and healing in our community across our country and across the world. And as always, Lord, I ask for blessings for the first responders and members of our armed forces. You will guide them, watch over them, and keep them safe each and every day. I ask for all of these blessings in your heavenly name.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner White. Appreciate that very much. Please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kim? Kim? Merman? Merman?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moreta, changes to the agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners Joe Moreta, Development Services for the record. Commissioners, we have three changes on the agenda. First one is found on Agenda Page 3. This is for Item B2. This is a consent item. It has a typographical error in the zoning condition. It references the wrong street. The word State Road 674 is being removed and West Waters Avenue is being inserted. Next one is found on Agenda Page 7. There are revised documents that have been provided to the board as part of an addendum. This includes warranty of four improvements and warranty bonds. And on Agenda Page 9, Item I2, this relates to an item that we're going to discuss today in the workshop. We're removing the word water from the agenda item in terms of the title for the agenda and also in the body of the text. Moving to the agenda itself, we have three withdrawal continuances and remands. Item A1, which is Personal Appearance 20-0525. This application has been withdrawn by the applicant. Item A2, Personal Appearance 20-0526. This application has been withdrawn by the applicant. And finally, on A3, Item PRS 20-0528. This application has also been withdrawn by the applicant. Having said that, that concludes the changes to the agenda. Thank you.
Move the changes.
I have a motion about Commissioner Merman.
Commissioner White seconds.
Second about Commissioner White to approve the changes to the agenda. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll on the changes to the agenda.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move, Commissioner Merman.
Motion about Commissioner Merman.
Second. Commissioner White.
Second about Commissioner White to approve the consent agenda. Seeing no further discussions, please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. If there's anyone on the call or Zoom meeting that has an item on the consent agenda, your item has just been approved. Thank you very much. Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to the Land Development Code Amendment Workshop. Commissioners, this is a workshop. It's not an action item. We're seeking input from the board on nine amendments that have been either directed by the board or proposed by staff. I believe Mr. Adam Gormley wants to provide a preamble before we get into the actual presentation itself. After Mr. Gormley, Israel Monsanto of our staff will walk the board through slides pertaining to each PowerPoint slides pertaining to each amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gormley, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Board members. We do have a round of Land Development Code amendments for you today, some of which have been specifically directed by the board. But I'd like to just highlight for the board's attention that the majority of these are part of the implementation of the 12-month work program that the board had worked with over a series of workshops at the beginning of this year. Specifically, Items I2 through I7 are part of the implementation plan that the board had approved. And essentially, this is focusing on streamlining the oral argument and land use process and a heavy emphasis on connectivity within developments and furthering the board's desire to have connected communities that are both walkable and asset to the transportation network to the extent we can guide that kind of outcome. And I think that we have a number of amendments that will do that. I'm going to let Mr. Monsanto, ask him to go in detail on those. But I wanted to highlight that for the board moving forward, that this really is a good... Give a lot of credit to the board and the work that they've done on the workshop and working with the administration to really highlight what we're trying to accomplish in the next 12 months. And I think it really helped us package the amendments that we're bringing forward to you today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll ask Mr. Monsanto if he can start with Item I1 and run through the highlights and overview the agendas. I1 is one that the board has seen before, but we're bringing it back to you with some changes as a result of some input at the last public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'll start the presentation. Commissioners, this is the workshop session of the first round of the Land Development Code Amendments. The first public hearing will be on Thursday, July 23rd. The second public hearing will be on Thursday, September 24th. We have a total of nine text amendments for this round. The first one is the accessory dwelling text amendment. The purpose of this amendment is to clarify the accessory dwelling provision of our Land Development Code. This will regulate the minimum lot size for 7,000 square feet. This will also allow accessory dwellings on legal non-conforming lots. Additionally, accessory dwellings will be permitted on front yards placed at twice the depths of the district front yard setback and also variances will not be allowed for this provision to be varied. The next text amendment is related to wastewater connection. This will require connection to a publicly owned and operated wastewater facility for the subdivision of apparent parcel or lot of record in the urban service area. This will only allow subdivision of apparent parcel or lot of record in the urban service area if the newly created lot connect to a publicly owned and operated wastewater facility. We have exceptions today in our code for potable water, and this will remain as indicated in the code today. The next text amendment is related to public testimony by a party of record. The purpose is to allow public testimony by a party of record at the Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting for rezoning applications without requiring the party of record to file request for oral argument. Today, party of records are required to file for oral argument with the clerk's office. This amendment will make it permissible for a party of record to provide public testimony without first having to file that request for oral argument to speak in front of the board in the land use meetings. The next text amendment is related to time limit to approve planned development districts and general site plans. This will establish a time limit to approve planned development districts and general site plans after they are approved by the Board of County Commissioners. There will be a maximum of five years periods that will be established to receive construction plans or plot approval. Once the five-year period has passed and there is no construction or plot approval, the approved certified planned development site would aspire for the internal transportation network and external access points and as well as conditions related to the internal transportation network and external access for PD or portion of the PD.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. When you're done with this one, I need to call on Commissioner Merman, but go ahead.
Okay, got it. And then the last bullet point is upon expiration of the certified PD plan, the ratification of the PD will be required to file as a minor modification to the planned development.
Before I call in Commissioner Merman, Mr. Gormley, I see your hand.
Yes, sir. Thank you. It was...I'm sorry, I was a little late on my hand. I was actually going to highlight for the amendment that is dealing with oral argument. We will need to, as that amendment moves forward through the public hearing process, have some discussion about what items the board would like to have on the consent agenda. If we're not going to have oral argument, that will be another piece of that as that's one of the controlling factors for the consent agenda today. So we don't need to work that out today, but just wanted to highlight for the board that that piece will necessitate some discussion on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just...I didn't know we were going to run through all of them together, so I'll just save my comments to the end.
Okay. Okay, sir, proceed.
Thank you. The next Land Development Code text amendment is related to information for transportation in general site plans for planned developments. The purpose is to require additional information related to transportation on PD plans. This will be required on all general site plans for major modifications, PD rezonings, and minor modifications. There will be identification of cross-access and connectivity opportunities to surrounding sites and parcels for the proposed PD zoning districts in the context of the overall roadway network in the areas for the site that's being rezoned. There will be any alternative design consideration to these requirements will be required to submit a variation request in accordance to the Plan Development Design Variation, which is found in the Land Development Code Section 50306-C6. The next text amendment is 200724. This is related to the number of roadway classification on which vehicular and/or pedestrian cross-access may be required. This text amendment is being requested by the Transportation Section, and this is to expand the number of roadways from Class 5 to 6 on which vehicular and pedestrian cross-access may be required. Today, the transportation has seven classifications, seven being the local roads. This will add that list from 1 to 5, from 5 to 6. Again, the expansion of the application of cross-access requirements to Class 6 roadways such that cross-access is required for projects on all collectors and arterial roadways when specified conditions are met. The next text amendment is also related to transportation. This will allow additional alternative for emergency access connections within all planned development districts without requiring a rezoning or modification to the PD. Provide the same design standard for emergency access ways found today within the subdivision portion of the Land Development Code. The next text amendment is related to backyard chickens. This will allow backyard chickens on residentially zoned lots. Will permit the keeping of chickens on lots developed with single-family and two-family homes. Maximum allow number of chickens will be five. Rooster will be prohibited. Chickens must be kept in enclosed coops all the times in the rear yard. There are restrictions being imposed on height and the size of the coops. On-site slaughtering and excels will prohibit it. And also, there will be no variance allowed to these regulations. There are some enforcement experience and limitations that we may talk about those later. And then lastly, Commissioners, we have the LDC Amendment 100A56, and this is related to a continuance of public hearings provisions of the Land Development Code. This will add a provision to toll the calculation of the six-month timeframe limit for an application to be held at a public hearing. And this is in the event that the public hearing is canceled by the county during this six-month period. Again, this will allow to pause the calculation when there is county closures during emergency events. Once a public hearing is scheduled again, then the calculation of the time for the six-month deadline for an application will resume at the next public hearing. And this concludes all the text amendments for this round.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much. Commissioner Merman, did you want to ask a question now?
I just have one quick question, maybe a couple of comments. I know the accessory dwelling thing was done mainly a couple constituents up in the Odessa Keystone area. They had trouble with people building accessory dwellings on sites. And so I think that this goes a long way to help alleviate these situations from rehappening again and people using accessory dwellings as a business site and really ruining kind of the character of the neighborhood. So I do want to thank staff for all the work they've done on all these, especially on the backyard chickens. I know they talked with Stephen Grand about the agriculture issues, and they've really, I think, kind of whittled this down to something that really is got a lot of common sense to it. And so I'm happy. I know the 600 Facebook constituents that love backyard chickens will be very happy too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see no hands on this, so thank you, sir. We appreciate your presentation. Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. I believe this takes us to the item that Mr. Gormley is going to speak to on the school board. Adam?
Gormley, good morning again.
Thank you. Good morning again, Commissioner, Board members. Item K2 is an item to provide an update to the board on some ongoing school siting efforts, particularly in South County. You all had received some correspondence from the school district board members that related to a site that was being sought to be approved for middle and elementary school on Bishop Road in Wyomam on South County. We had been looking at that site and the transportation and improvements that would be necessitated by the development of that site and determined that we could not approve a siting as there wouldn't be any... We could not guarantee or even believe we could provide infrastructure to support that school in the time it would need to be opened. And the backup contains that response on that siting issue. We did want to give an update on the ongoing efforts to address the school needs in South County because during dependency of the siting request and subsequent to our response, county staff has been working with the school district staff to identify alternative sites that could be developed today and be situated in a location where infrastructure is already available or will be readily available to support the school. I'm happy to report to the board that the school district has moved their sites to a site in water set and are planning on engaging in the short term with construction plans to start construction of that school site, a site that is within the development of water set and as such has modern, standard sidewalks, roads, accessibility that will support the mobility of students to and from that school. County has met with the school district staff and talked about the timing of the Apollo Beach extension and the timing of that to support the school. And I'll believe that this is a good short-term solution for an immediate capacity need in South County. That being said, we're also looking with the school district on future needs and site-specific, future school sites to help us plan for those schools in the future, in years 3, 4, 5, and start trying to coordinate the efforts of school siting and infrastructure provision so that when those needs come up, the stage is already set for a school site that will have a good infrastructure system to support it. One related item to this, did want to advise the board that in probably starting the July meetings, you'll start seeing some school proportionate share agreements that have been pending. These are agreements that have been approved by the school district, sorry, school board, and call for a contribution to Middle School UU, which was the site on Bishop Road being considered for siting. The agreement did recognize that that was an unsettled issue and provided some flexibility that if that school is not able to be cited, the contribution could go to the school in the vicinity that would serve those students that was subject to be subject to that siting process. I'm giving the board just some advance notice because it's a little bit different language, but by the time we get these to the board, due to the coordination we've done with the school board and school district staff, we're able to identify what that school actually is. So just let the board know that it's coming. We thought it was very important that that question be answered for those agreements. And so while it won't be stated in the agreement itself, this is the plan that we have worked with the school district. And I think it's a very good short-term outcome for solving an issue that had some immediate need to it. And we do look forward to continuing our coordination with the school district and joint planning for building good communities supported by good infrastructure grounded by good schools. That's my update on that item. Available for any questions? If not, thank you for the...
Thank you, Mr. Gormley. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized for a question.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Can't hear you, Commissioner Kemp. Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
You're very faint.
I don't know what I can do because I have my...
There you go. You got it. All right, there you go.
Okay. I guess you didn't hear my votes either. I don't know. I voted every time. That's funny. Okay. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you. I know this has been a sea change for the way that our staff has worked with the schools in their siting process. And I think it's a really important step that we have moved forward in this way. I for one, and I know many other Commissioners, had seen painful to watch videos of kids walking on non-sidewalks through high weeds and really traversing on dangerous roads in dangerous conditions to schools. Our board voted unanimously to put a two-mile safety zone around the schools. And this, I think, has really changed the way that we move forward. And it's an important step that we had to take and we hadn't taken. So I think this is a really great thing. I know it took a lot of difficult negotiations work and coming to a place where this could be achieved. So I'm very, very pleased about this. And thanks for the explanation too on the pro rata share or proportionate share that is coming up so that we understand completely what that is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. See no other hands. Mr. Moreta, was there anything else we did take up on land use agenda?
That concludes our agenda, sir. Our first ever virtual agenda.
Yeah, okay. Went smoothly. 24 minutes. I want to adjourn the land use meeting and now call the workshop on comprehensive plan amendments to order. Who's handling that?
Tony Garcia, right here, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
Tony Garcia, good morning. How are you?
Very fine, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Tony Garcia, Planning Commission staff. We will have...
Mr. Garcia, you kind of faint there. Could you get something, a little more volume to your speech there?
I can do that. Give me one second. How was that, Commissioner?
It's better.
Okay, great. So this morning, we will be providing you all some information, a brief overview on four proposed plan amendments. The first amendment will be presented by Ms. Melissa Dickens, and she should be on right now, and I will let her kick off the presentations. Thank you.
Ms. Dickens?
Thank you. Good morning, Board members. Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission staff. One moment, I'm going to share my screen so you can see my PowerPoint. Are you all seeing that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is HCCPA 20-07. This is a proposed text amendment to the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. This is a rather significant text amendment, and we are very excited to bring this forward to you today. This is something that we have been working on collaboratively with our Hillsborough County partners now for over a year. And joining me in this presentation and available for questions are Lucia Garcis, John Lyons, Adam Gormley, George Cassidy, and Kevin Moran. And I really want to thank them and their staff for the ongoing collaboration and assistance on this. This is a workshop today, so there is no action required. We are looking forward to hearing your comments, your feedback, and your questions. I want to speak a little bit on the background on this. We do plan to bring forward the update to the overall Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan to you in phases. The graphic on the right-hand side of the screen shows how we are currently thinking about these phases and bringing them forward. You can see that the One Water portion is highlighted there in blue, and this is the first portion of the overall plan update that we're going to be bringing forward to you all in the coming months. This specific One Water update will update and combine the stormwater management, sanitary sewage, and potable water elements. It also incorporates water resources-related language and maps that are found in other elements. And this update will replace these existing elements with this new One Water chapter, and we will be providing a full strike-through underline as part of the public hearing. Before I get to the content, I want to briefly touch on some of the collaboration and innovation that has gone into this process. First, One Water is recognized nationally as being on the forefront of water resources planning and linking traditional planning with water resources. And this is, we believe, one of the first One Water approaches to a comprehensive plan in the whole country. So we're excited about this innovative approach. One Water reflects the interrelated nature of water. You know, of course, the way our plan is today is the water resources elements are siloed into different aspects. And as we started looking at those, we saw all of the relationships, all of the overlap in between these different aspects of water. And we wanted to have a plan that reflected the way the water works and also provide a framework for some of the new and innovative initiatives that county staff is putting forward. As I mentioned, this was developed collaboratively with Hillsborough County staff, and we're excited about that process because that means that this is not a plan that will sit on a shelf. This is something that will actually be implemented, and the folks who joined us in putting this together are excited to proceed with the implementation. I also wanted to share that we did share a draft with our local, state, and regional agency partners. So the draft incorporates feedback from Tampa Bay Water, EPC, SWIFTMUD, and other agencies. And this document is a reflection of some of the policy direction that you all have provided previously. It's part of the work program that we came forward... It's part of the work program that we came forward to you earlier this year to present. These items here are incorporated into the One Water chapter, and they reflect directly your feedback that was provided at the beginning of the year in the series of land use workshops. So this is a little more detail about what's in there that reflects your feedback and your comments. And this slide shows the overall goals for One Water. There are six goals that we are excited to incorporate into this chapter. These goals can really be categorized into a couple of different groups. First, we wanted to be sure that the water resources language that is in the plan today, that is good and provides great planning context and policy direction. We wanted to make sure that we kept that language and moved it forward, updated it where it needed to be updated, but retained the language that made a lot of sense and had a lot of influence over policy. So that group of goals, I would say, includes things like protect and preserve water resources, some of the water conservation language. Additionally, there's some language in there about providing adequate facilities for current and future county residents. And then we have some new goals that are approaches or innovations that county staff will be pursuing, things like low-impact development, trying to better link our land use planning with water resources planning to discourage sprawl and encourage redevelopment, also integrated water resources management and coordinated water resources planning, and then making sure things are viewed through a sustainability lens. And I did want to share there are a couple of places where you can find some additional information on this update. We wanted to make sure that this update was very accessible to the public and our stakeholders to provide some information. So we do have a separate website that is a One Water project page. That's planhillsborough.org/onewater. And then we also have a One Water mapping application that's on that same project page. This is where the public can go and see the different interrelationships between different aspects of water, zoom in, zoom out. And we think it helps tell the story about how water resources are connected and synthesized as part of this planning effort. And this slide shows some of the next steps. And I did want to mention also, we had a Planning Commission briefing yesterday. The Planning Commissioners were very pleased with this work product. They didn't have any suggested edits at this time. So I wanted you all to have that information as well. But of course, today is our workshop. This Thursday at 6:00 PM, we're going to be having a virtual public meeting. And so we're looking for feedback and comments from the public and stakeholders there. And then it will be coming back for public hearings in August for both the Planning Commission and BOCC. And then we anticipate adoption in late October. This concludes my presentation today. I am available for any questions or if there are any comments or feedback on the language. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Commissioner White, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say for the record that there are some concerns coming out of the agricultural community about this. My take on it is that they're just minor concerns, but I just wanted to let Adam and Melissa know that you'll be receiving a request from my office to meet with some ag leaders about it.
Thank you.
Okay. No more questions on that, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As soon as... There we go. As soon as... I'm going to go ahead, and we have three more briefings to present you. I will be doing all three of those. If you give me one second to go ahead and pull up one of the presentations, we will go ahead and start. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. The first item that I will be presenting to you this morning is a privately initiated amendment. This is located up in the Keystone area. This is northwest of Boy Scout Road and Grove Lane. This is located on the west side of Boy Scout Road, as you can see on the general locator map. It's located within the rural area. It is within the Keystone Adessa Community Plan boundaries. The major roadways are Boy Scout Road to the west, Racetrack Road, Tarpon Springs Road, which lies to the south, and Gun Highway to the west. The site is shown on the aerial here as depicted by the heavy magenta line-dash-line. It is 5.1 acres in size. Most of the surrounding area and character are rural homes on one acre and larger tracts. And of course, the character in this surrounding area consists of agricultural uses and open spaces. The adopted future land use map shows that most of the land in the area is either agricultural or very low-density residential uses. The request is to go from AR 1 to 5 to AR... I'm sorry, A1 to 5 to AR 1 to 2 and 1/2, Agricultural State 1 to 2 and 1/2. Here is the... There is a requested change. The purpose for the change and the request to the change is the applicant has a 5.1-acre site, but they do have some wetlands on the site, which takes the total acreage under five acres. Therefore, they don't meet the 1 to 5 criteria to be able to build one unit, and they cannot apply the wetlands density credit because that credit is not applicable in the Keystone area. So to be able to build the one unit, they're making the request to go up one land use category to be able to have one buildable grid on the site. Again, the request is from Agriculture 1 to 5 to Agricultural Estate. It shows that you can build one dwelling unit, but as I told you, do the unique circumstances. That's not possible under this land use and the conditions of the site. Under the AE, you could build two dwelling units on a five-acre site. The buildup potential for non-residential uses is 40,000 square feet or a 0.25-floor area ratio under Agriculture 1 to 5 and 20,000 square feet or a 0.25-floor area ratio or whatever is less intense under the Agricultural Estate. That concludes my presentation on this particular item. I am open for any questions that you all may have.
I don't see any questions, Mr. Garcia. So you can proceed to the next item.
Thank you, sir. Can you see my slide?
Yes.
Very good. The next item before you is CPA 2009. This is an affordable housing bonus, housing element text amendment that has been privately initiated. This is a privately initiated text amendment, and it proposes modifications to the housing element, specifically the affordable housing density bonus. This would add the RP2 and WV2 as areas... Pardon me. As areas that could use the affordable housing bonus. This would allow an additional two units per acre. See if I can move you. There you go. The site must meet the minimum size for a planned village specified in the future land use element, and the site must be within the WVR2 and RP2 future land use categories. The developer must provide public water and sewer specified for planned villages in the future land use element. Public, private, or nonprofit transit services must be available within one mile of the project site. As far as agency comments and other considerations, we did receive comments from the county, from the Strategic Infrastructure Division, that the application submitted does not have sufficient information to adequately review its impact on public facilities. And also from zoning, that the proposed changes for the housing element is not sufficient for review at this moment. In addition to that, as you all are very well aware, the BOCC-directed land use studies of RP2 and WVR2, which are ongoing with community input being sought with workshops scheduled with the BOCC in July. I will let you all know, as Ms. Dickens has already stated, these are all non-action items. They are here for your information to take into consideration, to be able to provide comments to us or concerns that you may have as the transmittal hearing is currently scheduled for late August right now. That would be around August 27th. That concludes my presentation on the affordable housing density bonus. We encourage and are open for any comments or concerns that the Commissioners may have at this point in time regarding this proposed amendment.
All right. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Overland, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that. Thank you for your presentation, and I do recognize this is a privately initiated item. I do have a number of concerns and reservations about this privately initiated comprehensive plan amendment, and I wholeheartedly disagree with the assessment that this proposed text amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This amendment strays from the current affordable housing density bonus language that we utilize throughout the county in a number of negative and substantive ways. One, it expands the definition from that of affordable housing to attainable housing. Two, it lowers the 20% set-aside requirement to 15% for low and very low-income households. And three, it expands the definition of transit to include private and nonprofit transit services. The expanding of the definition of affordable housing to include attainable housing has significant consequences that need to be highlighted here. Currently, Policy 3.6.1 of the housing element of the future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan allows for density bonuses to encourage the development of more affordable housing, and I'll quote, "when the purpose for the increase is to provide low and very low-income affordable housing." This alone makes this amendment inconsistent with the COM Plan as the industry definition of attainable-for-sale housing is unsubsidized profitable housing developments that meet the needs of those with incomes between 80% and 120% of area median income. Here, the COM Plan calls for this bonus to be utilized for households at or below 80% of AMI. To add some needed context, in Hillsborough County, the income limit per household count using 120% AMI for a family of four is $84,360. 80% of the income limit is $56,250 for a family of four, and at 50% AMI is $35,150. Changing the density bonus to assist families with an income limit of $84,000 does not sound like a reasonable course of action, especially in these times. The amendment further lowers the 20% set-aside requirement to 15% for low or very low-income households for the affordable and attainable Housing Plan Village bonus, density bonus. After my three months on the emergency policy group, I've learned that Wy Mama needs more affordable housing, not less. Many in their communities have struggled with obtaining food, COVID-19 testing, and internet access for their children to learn, given the lack of internet infrastructure in that area. The county has many wonderful partners that have stepped up to fill the gap, but this pandemic is only highlighting the social inequities that exist in this area of the county. I realize the bonus would have an additional 15% for moderate incomes, but that community needs every bit of the extra 5% for low and very low income. At yesterday's Affordable Housing Advisory Board meeting, we had a wonderful presentation from Ms. Ann Ray from the University of Florida Schimberg Center for Housing Studies that addressed Hillsborough County's housing needs. There were a lot of critical, important data presented there, but I'm certain we'll also present that to the full BOCC board when the final report is submitted. But I want to highlight something that impacts this decision as we are looking to have a hearing in August on this item. Below 50% AMI, there is an absolute shortage of affordable rental units to the tune of 54,018 unit gap in our county. That's 54,000 units of affordable housing that we need. At 0 to 80% AMI, there are more affordable units than renter households, but not enough affordable units for the gap because that gap is 26,000 up to 80% AMI. At 120% AMI, there is a very small surplus of affordable housing rental units, only 4,700 and change. This only solidifies the need for more affordable housing. Finally, the current policy requires mass transit services must be available within a reasonable distance of the project. This amendment would significantly change mass transit services to public, private, or nonprofit transit service. I'll note that Wy Mama is currently serviced by Heart Flex Line only. My concern is that although the language may have been brought in to include community nonprofit initiatives, have not yet been able to move fully forward, the language is broad enough where you may be able to use Uber to qualify for a private transit service. Given this current situation, I would like our community partners to address the social inequities, not exacerbate them. This community needs more affordable housing, and I want to make sure that we're listening to this community in this process. I'm also very perplexed why this is coming before us now. Even though it's a workshop, I recognize that, and we'll be addressing that in August. But we're currently in the process of doing that in these areas. The Planning Commission is doing an admirable job in the midst of a pandemic of engaging with community stakeholders to study and prepare the potential amendments in both RP2 and WVR2, future land use categories. In my opinion, this comprehensive plan amendment is not ripe for discussion until we, as a board, first hear from the community as to what they want out of this community and their community plan. We have been taking great strides to prioritize affordable housing, and this amendment would actually, in my opinion, take us back two steps. Thank you.
Make it very, very clear that we're not voting on anything today. This is only a workshop.
That's correct.
Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of questions. Were shareholders involved in this? Any of the shareholders in putting this amendment together?
You're referring to members of the community in the RP2 and WVR2 areas?
Well, I mean shareholders. It could be people in the community. It could be legal representation. It could be anybody.
To my knowledge, Commissioner, I do not know to what degree the applicant has reached out to the community. That's something that is privately initiated, as I said. So outreach efforts by the applicant would be something that the applicant would have more of an intimate understanding of and be able to respond to you on that at some point in time in the future.
So for shareholders, because I have gotten some input on this item, so shareholders, stakeholders, I guess, they would have to wait for the public hearing process? Or could they reach out to the person? they reach out to the person that has initiated the whole plan?
Well, two things. Number one, the word of the text amendment has gotten out to leaders within those communities, and I believe that the representatives for the applicant have been making strides to try and reach out and discuss this with these people, in addition to the consultants that are also working on the outreach program that we have established for this area that you all are well aware of. I know that the representatives for the applicants have requested to meet with the consultants to better understand how they may be able to move this amendment further to better serve the people in that area.
Okay. If I could have a couple more questions, Mr. Chair. Is this going to be the only density bonus in the comp plan that would incentivize affordable housing?
There are currently incentives for affordable housing in the housing element. This brings a unique list in that it's trying to provide it within different areas that would not normally be eligible under the current affordable housing incentives in the comprehensive plan under the housing element, and it also brings the statement of attainable housing into the mix, which is also not currently being used to provide an incentive for a bonus increase for attainable housing. So there's two new things that are being brought forward, but yes, there are currently incentives that we do provide for affordable housing.
And are you considering the amendment to be on the same track as the WVR and RP2 studies, since they raise similar issues, or they raise issues about the same area? Is that something that you're doing?
That's part of the concern, I think, of some individuals out there, in that the timing of this being in the midst of an outreach program, I think the COVID-19 and where it has shifted a lot of the hearings has further complicated the progression of these amendments and also the outreach program. I do know that this body, the BOCC, is still having to reconsider their timeline on the moratorium on those two areas, in addition to, and that kind of factors into where these amendments are going to move forward. As I said, the transmittal hearing, this is a text amendment, so the transmittal hearing on this would occur in August, which is the same hearing that I believe that we tentatively have scheduled for the same text amendments for the WVR and the RP2. So that tends to be a little unique kind of situation to have these items contemporaneously brought before the board when we don't really have any direction as to what the fate of these are going to be from a timeline aspect, due to the circumstances that we're discussing here today.
Right. I guess that's why I asked the question, because we've had discussion at the board about the RP2, and so I just wanted to find out from you if this amendment was going to be on that same track.
You still have workshops, you still have workshops to hold on RP2 in July, so you're still right in the middle of things.
I know. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. And, you know, I think it's important that at this workshop, staff and the applicant can hear some of the concerns that they're facing with this, and I have several. As has been mentioned, the point of the moratorium is to involve citizens in land use planning for these areas specifically. And so this application kind of is circumventing that whole process of involving citizens in bringing comp plan amendments and land development code changes to us for their communities. And as far as affordable housing goes, yes, we have density bonuses inside the urban service area, and we can and should provide affordable housing inside the urban service area in Wy Mama's town center, which is inside the urban service area. There's plenty of area of Wy Mama that is inside the urban service area that makes sense for true affordable housing. This puts it outside the urban service area boundary and doubles the density out there. I mean, some of this, I think, why not just go ahead and cut to the chase and ask for a comp plan amendment to expand the urban service area, because essentially, that's what will happen if you're getting four-per-acre density outside the urban service area in this way, especially because there's no guarantee, as Commissioner Overman was discussing, but I want to highlight, there's no guarantee you'd get any very low-income housing, which is what we need in this county. We have a huge deficit inside the urban service area. So there's no guarantee you'd get any very low-income housing at 50% AMI and below, since the text of this amendment says only that 15% of the units could be either low or very low-income housing. So with 15% for moderate, which can be up to 120% AMI, so you may not get any very low income, and you'd be getting four-per-acre density outside the urban service area. We don't, we really don't even need to incentivize this new category of attainable housing with the moderate AMI up to 120% AMI, because as I look at the housing that's available now in that area, and the housing that's being built, and the home prices that are being built, they are affordable by people making 120% the median income. In fact, they're affordable for people making 80% the AMI, if you start doing the math. So I won't take you through all that, but I've done the math. We have that housing. We do not need to offer double density, urban densities outside the urban service area, to get those price points. We've got them. And I just will say that I totally agree with Commissioner Overman's assessment of the transit requirement. I mean, the reason we don't increase density outside the urban service area and incentivize affordable housing way the heck east of Wy Mama and Baum is because there's no transit available, and it will cost them each $10,000 a year to maintain a car to get to work. And, you know, what we end up with out there is commuter subdivisions, and it's the wrong place to put affordable housing far from jobs and services. And so pretending that, you know, you've got this, well, alluding to a transit requirement, but defining transit as private services, Commissioner Overman and I had the same thought as you, that that definition was so broad it could include Uber. And also, one mile is too far. It says it has to be within one mile of transit, when all transit studies show that for transit to be viable, people have to be concentrated, really, within a quarter mile, but certainly no farther than a half a mile from transit. So I have a lot of problems with this amendment. I just wanted to make sure that the applicant and the staff was aware of those. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. And I won't go too long, because I think the points made by Commissioners Overman and Commissioners and Commissioner Smith were excellent points, and many of the same I was going to make. I'm really pleased that Commissioner Overman cited the University of Florida Schimberg Center for Housing Studies. That was presented yesterday to the Affordable Housing Group and also to the Planning Commission. And it clearly, as Commissioner Overman stated, said that there is actually a surplus in our county of affordable, available units at the 120% AMI. This is really not well-taken, not necessary. It's really a way to, as both Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Overman, to build Hillsborough County for the future that we don't want. I've been saying for some time about how we have done reckless planning without the infrastructure and looking at what we need to do to make this county sustainable for the future, and this does just the opposite of that and undermines everything we've been trying to do. So I will, with that said, I mean, I think excellent points were made, and also, this is not, yes, putting in there the public-private transit, excuse me, options is not well-taken and would not be, this is not what we want to be doing for the future.
Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Oh, forgot to take my hand down. Sorry. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Garcia, do you have another one that's not so controversial?
Yes, we can end on a lighter note, sir. Go ahead and, let me go ahead and pull up the final item for your consideration today. The final item for you, here we go. This is located, the final item is HCP 2010. This is the old Piccadilly in North Dale Mabry Highway. This is...
Been there.
This is located in northwest Hillsborough. It is within the urban service area, as you can see on the locator map. This is a privately-initiated map amendment. It's approximately 4.75 acres. As you can see, it's on the west side of North Dale Mabry, in the Carrawood Village area. It's depicted by the heavy dashed magenta line. The request, as you can see, there's several land use categories. There's got a little sliver of residential four in the westernmost piece. It's like a reverse L. So in the westernmost piece, you have residential four, then you have the office commercial 20, which is depicted where my cursor is, and then to the north, residential 12. Request by the applicant is to change the residential four and residential 12 pieces to also become office commercial 20, to be able to potentially attain the desired floor area ratio that is required by the applicant for whatever project they are building, which we do not know. As you can see on the impacts, if you focus on the total buildup potential based on the individual land use categories, it's about 114,000 square feet. The potential, if everything goes to OC 20, goes to about 144,000 square feet. The increase also is from 64 dwelling units to 95 dwelling units. And that concludes that presentation.
Okay. I see no, Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you. I just have a question. This change, it appears as though what they're trying to accomplish in this change is just to get consistency across the property. Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So why wouldn't they just go to the entire property of OC 20? Well, the existing, but have it consistent across the board? I mean, it eliminates the ability for residential at all on a...
Residential is still allowed under the OC 20.
Oh, it is? Okay. So is that, that's what they're proposing?
We do not know what the applicant is proposing at this point in time, ma'am.
Okay. The reason I ask is, obviously, it's on a transit corridor, and I didn't want the change to preclude potential, you know, multifamily housing or something along those lines. So I was just curious if the change would preclude something like that. Okay. And it's just my question. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. So I noticed on one of these maps that, the map that shows what the current comp plan future land use designations are compared to what their request is, but the one that shows the current, you can really see it, well, both of them. The area that would be changed, yes, thank you. You can see that, exactly. You can see that the area that would be changed is largely wetlands, and so the wetlands are mainly the area that has the lower density, lower intensity, and that's the area that would be changing in this parcel. So I just want to point that out and make sure that EPC weighs in on the appropriateness of change in the density and intensity here.
Yeah. EPC as a standard is one of our standard review agencies when we send this out for external review, Commissioner Smith, so, and of course, they will, if this were able to move forward, and that's part of the EPC's task, as you very well know, is to go out to the site and properly delineate it to see what is actually buildable.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Garcia, is there anything further?
That concludes our presentation this morning, commissioners.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That concludes all of our agenda items for the day. I ask that everyone stays safe. Our county is moving in a different direction again, so stay safe as much as you possibly can. With all that being said, we adjourn. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Thank you.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Thank you.